We are ready, Mr. Chairman. Ready, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, everyone. I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order on May 20th, 2025. Would the clerk please call roll?
Jason Cavalier.
Here.
Joakim Akurton. Judy Anna Tinklinberg.
Here.
Michelle Richards.
Here.
Sheila Henson.
Here.
Frances Lu.
Here.
Would the clerk please make a note on the record that the quorum as of the Planning Commission is present, the public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. Welcome, everyone. Please make sure your electronic devices are turned off. No hats in the room, please. Try and keep your clothes on. All right. Commissioner Frances Lu has offered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Prayer. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given to us. We ask you tonight to please grace us with wisdom and patience as we attempt to make the best decisions possible for our county, its residents, and workers. Lastly, we ask that you continue to remind us every day to just be kind to one another. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Lu. A couple of things before we get started here. I would like everyone to keep in mind in your prayers and thoughts, Ms. Lynette Henson, she had a family emergency and couldn't be with us tonight, and we will miss her and we worry about her and hope that they have peace in their upcoming time. Our second one here is we're going to approve the agenda, but first, we commissioners, before approval, item 5A has been withdrawn by the applicant. Do I hear a motion to accept an amended agenda removing item 5A shadow moss?
Mr. Chairman, I have another comment, if that's okay, before we vote for that?
Okay.
Thank you. I don't know, or I guess you tell me, Ms. Chairman, if you would like to address this now, or I can go over it later during other on the agenda, but our minutes from the April workshop, there was a presentation included in that from staff about the comp plan update that we actually didn't have, so I wanted that removed from.
We'll approve the minutes next. Let's get on to the agenda. Let's take that up and other.
Okay, thank you.
Table that till the other, please. Thank you. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approval of the agenda without or removing item 5A, SD 2024-1442 Shadow Moss Preliminary Matt? The applicant has withdrawn.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
Show of hands. Six to zero, Ms. Lynette Henson was not here. Agenda is approved. All right, our next item is approval of minutes from April 15th, 2025, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 15th, 2025, has a motion and a second. Show of hands. Five to zero, one abstaining because Ms. Tinklinberg was not here. Next item is approval of minutes from the May 1st, 2025 Planning Commission Workshop.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes from May 1st, 2025. Show of hands. Unanimous, six to zero, Ms. Lynette Henson is not here still. We now consider ourselves into citizens' comments. I am... Send Ms. Jennifer go get those for me. Thank you, ma'am. It looks like we had one person sign up. Mr. Crump, you sure you don't want to speak? That's fine. All right, when approached the dais, please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. When you state your name and address, the clock will start.
Thomas Wesley Crump. I live at 11769 Harrisburg Road, Fort Mill, South Carolina. Or Indian land, it comes in both ways. And last month, when we had this discussion, they were... Last month, when they had this discussion, they were talking about the traffic, how they were going to put a road in behind the school to alleviate the traffic on Harrisburg Road.
Hang on, sir. If it's a case that's on the docket tonight, we need to save those comments for that. But if you have general comments about anything that's going on in the county or it'll apply to the Planning Commission, we'll take those. But if you have something for a specific case, you need to sign up for that one, and I'll pass this back if you want to sign up, if you want to do that.
Can I speak?
Well, yeah, you can speak, but you need to keep your comments off of that case.
Okay. Anyways, they talked about taking care of the lighting. It wouldn't be a problem for the neighborhood about the lighting, but what about the noise from soccer fields and football fields? We have a school in Nations Ford Elementary School through the woods behind our house, about one mile, and most of the time it sounds like their school, what they're doing at the football and soccer games is in my backyard because it's so loud.
Hang on, Mr. Crump. I just want to make sure, you're talking about the school case, right?
Right.
Right. I need you to wait until we pull that case up, otherwise the comments don't really apply. Does that make sense? I'm not trying to shut you down. You're welcome to come back up and talk, and you'll get your full three minutes then too, but it's just, it's not this part of the meeting where we talk about that.
Okay. Well, you called my name, so I thought I was up.
All right, well, this is the general comments, if there was something about it. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your understanding. No one else is assigned to speak in citizens' comments, so we'll consider ourselves out of citizens' comments. All right. Our first item for public hearing by the Planning Commission is not on the agenda anymore, 5A, so we'll move past that. The next item is public hearing for conditional use 2024-0682 Harrisburg Global Academy. Mr. Blazey.
All right, that one is mine. Starting off with a brief overview of the conditional use, it's located off Harrisburg Road, adjacent to the Almond Glen community, 26 and a half acres. The intent is to open a charter school. It's currently a zone medium density residential, and the future land use in this area is growth area. Here are several location photos of the site along Harrisburg Road and a little bit of background, farther background about the parcels. The parcel to the north has one primary residential use and several accessory structures that would be torn down if this conditional use would be approved. Now, looking at the comprehensive plan as it applies to this area, it's designated as growth area, which helps to achieve a panhandle goal of 1.1 from the comprehensive plan, which is direct new development into growth areas identified on the future land use map. When looking into the surrounding uses and zoning, it's primarily all residential with zoning districts ranging from low density residential, medium density, and urban residential. Now, looking at the conditional use plan itself and the requirements, this conditional use has two requirements as per the Unified Development Ordinance. The first I'll cover is the connectivity requirement, which requires connectivity to surrounding residential areas. And this, where a full vehicle connection isn't practical, a multi-use trail connection shall be provided for pedestrians and bicycles. On this revised plan, on the right-hand side of the screen, they have that connection go into a parcel owned by the Almond Glen community and also the medium density residential parcel zoned to the south. Now addressing the other requirement, a buffer along all athletic fields and parking areas near residential property. You can see on the right-hand side of the screen, this landscaping plan depicts the required buffer along the athletic field there and along the parking area. So during the April 15th Planning Commission meeting, a topic of heavy conversation and discussion was the site's background as a brownfield. Since the meeting, the applicant has uploaded the following documents. I'm not going to read through all of these, and I know the applicant intends to speak later and go into farther detail on all these documents. In terms of the technical review committee, the applicant did upload that revised site plan, which I just covered on May 5th. This resolved all of staff's current outstanding comments, and the applicant received an approval letter on May 7th. So at this time, staff recommends approval. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here to present and answer questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff? No one? Thank you, Mr. Blazey.
You're welcome.
The applicant here. Evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. George Gennaro. Address 202 Rose Bay Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 29615. Our project team is here available today to speak in order that we would like to share about the project and also answer questions are myself, Nick Dab Meyer with Silvan Environmental Consultants, Brittany Barnes with Silvan Environmental Consultants to discuss any of the environmental assessments that have been done on this property, John Schick with the RMP, which is our traffic analysis engineer, and lastly, Justin Matthews with Alliance Education Services to discuss public engagement in the school facilities. As far as the site plan, we updated the site plan to meet the UDO. We added the multi-use path and incorporated all the landscaping requirements for the project. We're going to pass it on to our other team if they want to share at this point, but we're open to answer any questions that the commission has in regards to the project, definitely on the environmental aspects, traffic, and the school facilities and public engagement. Thank you.
Is any other parties of the applicant care to speak? Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have...
Please come back up to the dais, sir.
I don't know if you're the person to answer this about the coal ash that was mentioned.
Can I answer that?
Brittany Barnes.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Brittany Barnes. 5 Rosemary Lane, Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you. What specifically is your question?
There was a gentleman at our last meeting who expressed concerns about there being coal ash at the site, and I wondered if that had been addressed or proven or disproven.
Yes, so there was formerly coal ash that was buried in the landfill. The landfill currently has between three to six feet of fill on top of it as a cover material, so none of the landfill materials are exposed on the land surface in the area that we're planning on doing any of the development. So among other things that were in the landfill, coal ash was one of them. It was documented. The agency is aware of it. We've done a lot of investigation out there in accordance with the brownfields program, where we collected soil and groundwater and looked at the contents of the landfill and also confirmed that whenever we were in the landfill area that there was at least three to five, or sorry, three to six feet of a cover material that was on top of that had been placed there during the closure of that landfill, during the time it was closed.
And over time, with weather and erosion and so forth, is there any danger of that amount of cover ever not being enough?
No, one of the requirements of the completion of the brownfields is that we will maintain the cap, which means that if there was any place there was noticeable erosion, it's required that we fix it. So there are inspections that happen on a yearly basis in accordance with the South Carolina DES for that reason.
And lastly, can you just address what the dangers of coal ash are? If it was exposed?
Well, you shouldn't eat it.
I think we know that.
There's really, I mean, unless you're actually coming into physical contact with it, it's a... You're not going to be exposed to it. I mean, unless you're ingesting it, which I don't suspect anybody was going to eat it, it's not a vapor problem, it's just a physical thing that's there, so if you encounter it, you can remove it and put it somewhere else in another landfill and take it away. So it's more of a physical barrier, something that you don't want to touch, something that you don't want to eat, you don't want to play with it, you don't want to be digging in it. And so with the cap that's already on the landfill, you're not, there's essentially no exposure to that material.
Okay, the question was what the dangers of coal ash are? If played with or come in contact with and so forth?
Well, for the specific dangers, I would have to actually go back to my research and look it up, so I can't tell you that specifically right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Tinklinberg.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Okay, so you mentioned, Brittany, that it was not going, the areas where coal ash have been identified were not going to be impacted with the development of this project. So those have been identified, and those are not going to be impacted, or the entire site is going to have that fill added to maintain the barrier that you described?
The entire site already has a cap on it.
Okay.
So what we're not going to do is we're not going to take anything away from that cap, and if we end up having to do any grading, we'll add back to that cap, so...
So it will be impacted, then? I guess I'm having trouble understanding because you mentioned that if it was exposed or ingested, that that's a problem, and we're, you know, having to make the decision to put schoolchildren on this site, so I'm trying to understand the development process of keeping that
Sure.
maintained and intact.
Sure. Right, so it would be covered or capped back if it was exposed at any point during development, then we would make sure that there was a cap placed back on top of it. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you are. Please.
So, you know, the coal ash is deep in the ground, you know, 50, 60 feet in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, we have definitely plenty of cross-sections in the DES documentation, so we don't expect to ever dig that up
Okay.
because any development is above the existing grade, so in order to bring in a road through the old landfill, it's on top of it, it's not below it, and we're adding on top of the existing cap.
Perfect, so it's not going to be impacted.
Oh, no, not at all.
Perfect, thank you.
That was easier than I thought it was. Didn't look at it.
I appreciate both of you. Mr. Chairman, I do have one other question. I know it was addressed a lot at the last meeting about traffic. I didn't know if there had been any additions or anything else with that. I know you're in my, your project is in my district. I am very familiar with this area and specifically the commuter traffic coming in and out of Pineville and Charlotte metro, so anything else to add?
I will definitely ask John to share a little bit about what's going on
Perfect, thank you.
in your neighborhood.
Name and address, please, sir.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Schick. I'm with the RMP. We're at 8210 University Executive Park Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina, 28262. So to address your concern, we did do a traffic study. It was reviewed and approved by both SCDOT and Lancaster County staff, so it was done in accordance with their standards and evaluated a series of intersections there along Harrisburg Road, and then came up with some mitigation primarily at the site driveways. So at the southern driveway, you know, where everybody will enter the site, we're installing a northbound and southbound left turn lane at that intersection, so the left turn coming into our site, as well as the left turn going into Lancastershire on the opposite side, as well as a northbound right turn lane into our site. So those turn lanes would be installed, and then at the northern access point, which is egress only, there would be a separate left and right turn lane coming out of the site. I will say through coordination with SCDOT and the county, one of the major things with the traffic study was them requesting this school to do a staggered schedule so that there's two pickup and drop-off groups during those peak periods to help spread it out so there's not that one confined surge. So that was another thing that we worked with staff on.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Ms. Richards.
I have a question for your brownfield agreement. How long are you going to have to leave all of the monitoring wells and such in place? I know some of them will have to be abandoned because they're in construction areas, but what's the, what's the long-term goal?
All of the monitoring wells are already abandoned.
Okay.
So they're, they're gone.
Okay. Yeah, because according to this, they were just, they were just put in last year? Okay. I just normally they keep, so I'm a geotechnical engineer, so do a lot of brownfield site work too, so yeah, I was gonna say, I was surprised they didn't ask you to keep more on for long-term monitoring.
They didn't request any long-term monitoring. They were pleased with the data that we had, so there was no reason to keep the monitoring wells.
Good, all right, yeah. I don't have time to read that whole huge report.
Come on, it's a Stephen Keen novel. Environmental related?
Partially. Any other commissioners?
Not environmental, I have another question.
You have another question? Go ahead, Ms. Lu.
I just wondered where the students will be drawn from? What is the, where are the limits of where students will be being brought from to this location? Is it just Indian land, like our public schools, or can they be from across the county or another county also?
Name and address, sir.
Justin Matthews, 7945 Harbor Master Court, Denver, North Carolina, 28037. And if I understood your question, it is where are the kids going to come from?
Correct.
Got it. So the state law allows any child who's a resident of South Carolina to attend any eligible public school. So in theory, if you have a South Carolina address, anywhere in the state, you can attend. We shared last, last meeting, some data. As of the last meeting, we had over 1,200 children pre-apply for just over 500 seats for the, for year one. That number is now over 1,500 students, and they're about 80% from Lancaster County at this point. That being said, keep in mind that the charter school is a lottery, and so we anticipate a lottery, because if we opened today, we would have three children that want to be there for every seat that we do have. And so we will have no control over who walks in that door on that first day of school, but the statistics tell us that it looks like over three-quarters of them will most likely come from Lancaster County.
The reason for my question was there is some argument that... Oh, I'm explaining it to my colleagues why I came up with the question. The reason I am asking is there has been some discussion that these boys and girls have to go to school anyway in Indian land, and so it would not be adding anybody to the roads because they have to go to a school. But if this can draw from anywhere in the county and the next county and the next county, depending how badly someone wants to come to the school, and if they are chosen in the lottery, this would be adding non-Indian land students to the traffic problem. Is that correct?
I mean, it's, in theory, you could drive all the way from border to border. As a practical matter, that generally doesn't occur unless you have just unusual circumstances, and I say that finishing 27 years of doing this job, most parents have a threshold of the time that they can afford to send, you know, to drive. And as we talked about last meeting, we will have school buses, and those school buses will run multiple routes, and those routes will be only within a two-to-six-mile radius of the school, so we will not be going any deeper into, into South Carolina because, quite frankly, the people that need schools are literally in the backyard of the site. Additionally, on the traffic front, one of the things that, that our firm does is we're sensitive to the opening and closing times of other schools in the area, and we actually shift our start and end times to avoid bottlenecking. That's a huge issue, have two children myself. And the other thing that we do is we do not have our school buses stop on main roadways. We actually have them pull all the way into neighborhoods or side streets, and we create depot stops. What that does is that creates the, it's the postal service effect. We deeply understand that traffic is a huge issue in, not just in, in, in North Lancaster, but in the entire greater Charlotte area, and we've taken steps with the other schools that we've supported in this area to mitigate those and actually become part of the solution.
Thank you, sir. I have one more question here, and I would actually like to call back to Mr. Blazey. Do we have a grading plan from their submittal that we can look at? I don't see one in my packet, is why I ask.
Currently, the conditional use plan that was submitted was only two pages, so those are the two pages that we have for this application.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, what were the other two, what were the other leftover comments in the TRC besides the brownfield connectivity? I just want to go through it because they submitted the paperwork after we had our workshop on the first, so I want to understand what all of the resolutions were.
There were only the two outstanding TRC comments from the prior meeting, which was the buffer around the athletic fields and the connectivity to the neighborhoods, and they addressed those with their submission on May 5th.
Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir, thank you. If I could also add about your question about civil plans and grading plans, we typically don't get those until the conditional use has been approved. It's a lot of work and a lot of expense for an applicant to go through that for something they may not get, so this is, it's not typical that we would have one.
I understand. I wanted to call attention to that because one of my concerns, having great experience in grading plans in compaction in disturbed areas, is a question to the applicant on how you're going to build a road without cutting the ground. The topsoil rule usually require between nine and 18 inches around here before you get something you can build on, and at that point, if your cap was only three foot across that brownfield, you're getting down close to a foot at best.
Right, we understand that. The road will be on fill. That's the plan. If we can pull a site plan, the queuing road coming, the ingress, it's on fill around the, the, there we go, thank you. I can't point to it, but if you see the, the orange lines, which are queuing lanes, that whole area is on fill. So what we're proposing is basically stone and then the road base and the asphalt on top, and then daylighting back down.
That answers my question, thank you.
And we do have a grading plan incorporated in the TRC comments resumittal, so it's not on this application, but it has been submitted for...
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? We now consider ourselves into public hearing. Would Mr. Thomas Crump, please, come back up to the dais? State your name and address again for me, please, sir, and when you're finished, your three minutes will start. Thank you for your patience while we got the paperwork ready for you. Thank you for your patience while we got the paperwork ready for you.
Thomas Wesley Crump. I live at 11769 Harrisburg Road, Indian Land, South Carolina, 29707, which will be directly across from the school they're planning or trying to push in on this road. They say they address the traffic concerns, but every morning and every afternoon, it's, that's a cut-through road. And people are flying 60, 50, 60 mile an hour in a 40 mile zone because they don't care about the speed limits. But also, the noise ordinance, as far as noise, we're already got a school through the woods behind me, about a mile away as the eagle flies, three miles if you go by the road. But when they have their games and their cheerleaders going, and the bands playing, and soccer games and football games, we hear it like it's in our backyard already. So this place is right across the street. Where's that noise going to go to? We're all going to have to listen to it that live in this area. They said something about putting the school in because kids could walk to school. Well, I guess, I hope they're putting in sidewalks because there's no sidewalks on that road. And it's a very dangerous road, just picking up trash out on the edge of the highway in front of my roadfront property. I have to watch what I'm doing because people will run off the road all the time. That's why it's a dangerous road. And it's a cut-through road from Charlotte to South Carolina as well. And I don't think it would be safe for children to be walking on the shoulder of the road where there's no sidewalks. And even with the sidewalks, it's still a dangerous road. In the past six months, I've had two cars upside down from speeding and running off the road in proximity to my house, probably less than 50 yards, right where they're talking about putting in the, the road to go in behind the school. But okay, they, they run them back in behind the school, but they still got to come back out on Harrisburg Road. So you're putting in all these, if you've got 800 kids, you're looking at 800 to 1,000 cars coming in added to that road. We've got houses going up on that road right now on both sides near McAlpine Creek. Probably total average of them homes are going to be around 300 to 400 homes. That's an additional 600, 800 cars on that road already that will be coming in the near future already. And like I say, it's, the noise ordinance is going to be a one thing. You know, we don't want to sit there and listen to the football games and the soccer games that we are already hearing from Nations Ford High School in York County through the woods. And it's like it's in your backyard. That's how loud it is. This place right across the street, it's going to sound like they're in my living room. And everybody that lives on this road is going to hear that same amount of noise. I, I don't, I like kids that have football games and soccer games, but there's good places for those fields. And this is not one of them at that school. And as far as the dump itself, there's no six foot. There's three foot top field dirt on that. I was told this by the owner who owned and operated the dump. There's only three foot. If erosion might have taken some of that off, and if you grade down any, you're getting closer to that coal ash that is there. They did not run any tests. They only ran testing the ground soil over near where the houses are on five acres. The 21 acres beside it, this, where the landfill was, they've not done any tests down in the ground that I'm aware of because they, I watch them out there every day. So I don't, I don't see how they can say there's no coal ash concern when it's, the owner of the company told me, the owner of the land told me that there is a good amount of coal ash dirt in that property.
Okay, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Does the applicant have a response?
I think I said enough last meeting for, count for two meetings. But just want to lend a little bit of perspective. For the last 35 years, I've served as a public address announcer for thousands of football, soccer, baseball, softball, swimming and diving. It's, it's one of the things that I do as part of my career and a way I volunteer in the community. And I just want to make sure that the commission recognizes this is a K-8 program. So it will have none of the high school programs. Most middle school matches are usually played in the 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. range and wrap up usually prior to about 7:00, 7:30. And so I'm totally sensitive, and I understand with the high school games, it start around 7:00 or 7:30. It can go as late as midnight. Those do reverberate and can cause noise pollution. I completely understand that, but that is not the case here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes all the citizens we've assigned to speak. We consider ourselves out of public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question.
For the applicant? Allow it.
Okay, can we talk about mobility? Just in terms of getting from school to home and sidewalks, what that looks like?
As far as sidewalks, we are proposing a multi-use path through our site. So there's going to be connectivity to Amen Glen and also to the parcel on, on this page here, Plan Left, or to the south. So that is proposed. The multi-use path is 10 feet wide.
Thank you. So you're connecting to a sidewalk along the road, or that is not proposed?
No, it's not connecting to another sidewalk. It's not connecting to a proposed sidewalk. It's connecting to an adjacent residential property or parcel.
And staff, we don't require the sidewalk at this time?
As the code section requires, it's just a, a path, which could be a full road connection or a multi-use trail from the school, in this case, to a residential zone property. That's the requirement in the UDO. So that's what we look for.
So if that's part of the requirement, why are we not also requiring it to tie into a sidewalk that's along the roadway? Like, what are they tying it into, I guess is what I'm trying to understand. It's supposed to connect, so what are they connecting to?
So they're, they're going to the adjacent property line. But that's all that is required via the UDO. And there's not too many existing sidewalks along the Harrisburg corridor at this time.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blasey.
So, I'm sorry. One more question. To think about future, should we not require the sidewalk to be put in? So for future connectivity, that is an option as Harrisburg is further developed?
Ms. Williams?
That would be a consideration with the UDO rewrite. As it stands, we have no requirements to do that connection.
Thank you, April.
So, Ms. Williams, I have clarification on what a multi-use path? What is, what are, what is this?
So in a nutshell, it's a walking path so that the requirement is to have connectivity to the residential areas from a school. So it's a 10 feet wide path that will allow bicycles or pedestrians from the residential area that surrounds the school to safely walk to the school without having to get on Harrisburg. So that is the connection that they're using is a path, like a walking path.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, commissioners. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, you have before you, KCU 20240682, Harrisburg Global Academy. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who's second? Ms. Curriton, thank you. Any discussion, commissioners?
My main concern is the traffic. All we hear from especially Indian land residents, their number one concern in the county is traffic. And I'm concerned about a busy road that already has a school on it, another school proposed, and another school now that would bring people in from outside of Indian land, not serving just our residents, adding more traffic. And that's the main concern I have. Just, we are asked by our residents to please do something about traffic. And we cannot do much about it except in situations like this.
Thank you, Ms. Lou. Any other commissioners? We have a motion to approve, conditional use 20240682. Roll call vote, please.
Jason Cavalier?
Four.
Yakeem Akuritan?
Or.
Judy Anna Tinklinberg?
Or.
Michelle Richards?
Or.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
Frances Lou?
Against.
Vote is 5, 4, 1 against, with Ms. Lou dissenting. Ms. Lynette Henson is not here. Motion is approved. And will be recommended to council, county council. Next item is CP 20240367, Old Hickory LLC Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Blasey again?
No, it's actually me. He's just getting me the clicker. No, you're fine. Thank you. Tonight, we have the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Old Hickory Road. If you recall at our last meeting, we had the rezoning that you have tabled until the June meeting that is contingent upon this action. The property is located off of Old Hickory Road, and it's approximately 160 acres. They have requested the rezoning and this subsequent Comprehensive Plan Amendment in order to change this, the next step is to rezone into the, excuse me, from rural neighborhood. They are asking it to change the Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map designation from rural to growth area. These are pictures of the signs and the postings and property, as well as an aerial view of the property that we are talking about tonight. Prior to the Comp Plan 2040, which was adopted in April of 2024, the majority of the panhandle was identified as growth area. During that several-year process of adopting a new comprehensive plan, some of the areas around the panhandle were changed to rural living. They identified that as a transitional area and as a buffer for the urban living spaces. This area specifically around Van Wyck is listed as a rural area. Excuse me. Prior to the 2016 rezoning, this parcel was zoned as R30, which is one of our residential large parcel zoning classifications. When we adopted the Comprehensive Plan in 2024, this was designated as a rural area. And with the 2016 UDO rezonings, it was zoned as rural neighborhood. This is a photo of the comprehensive, the Future Land Use Map and the identified. And I would like to apologize that I did not zoom this in, so that is my fault. You can just see the whole county instead of the small parcel that we're looking at. I will do better next time. However, it is located right at the bottom of the panhandle in the areas that are identified as rural. As again, it is part of the transitional zone surrounding the area. And the Future Land Use Map, as we said again, is listed as rural. The applicants are requesting this to be designated as growth area to complement the rezoning request that they have pending. The site is adjacent to the west side of Roseland. Roseland has been a catalyst for a lot of interest in projects in this area because they have laid the groundwork for water and sewer. So that is the primary change in this area since the adoption of the Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan is that there is water and sewer now available in this area. The Future Land Use Designation Rural is not compatible with the rezoning request of MDR. However, with the definition of the rural area, it was contingent upon lacking water and sewer. So at that point, there's, there's pros and cons to both sides of that. Our Comprehensive Plan, specifically in the Greater Lancaster 1.2, one of the goals is to maintain the rural character of the area and to keep the Future Land Use Map. So that is why it is identified as rural. And that is one of the items to think about when you are making this decision. This does technically go against the current standard. However, because of the change in status, there are pros and cons to everything. So you guys get to make the decision. I'm just giving you the information tonight. These are the schools. They are, elementary is Irwin, AR Ruckert, and Lancaster High School. You guys have a copy of this paper chart, so that this one. But long story short, everyone kind of knows that the schools are full there as well. Again, we would like to highlight that the sewer, the Lancaster County Water and Sewer District has been working with them and discussing that, and there is water and sewer available now because of the projects in Roseland. At this time, for reasons that I have already mentioned, we do not have a recommendation from staff at this time because there are arguments on both sides of the coin. This is identified as rural on the Future Land Use Map. And the Comprehensive Goal 1.2 is to be consistent with the Future Land Use Map. However, the definition of rural in our Comprehensive Plan defines it as areas that are lacking water and sewer, and this one no longer fits that requirement. One of the concerns that was mentioned at our workshop is the lack of fire stations. There is a fire station within five miles of this property. It's three and a half miles. It's the Riverside Volunteer Fire Department. However, we, there are concerns with overburning our volunteer fire department and really delayed call times. And that is all I have for you guys. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? I do. Ms. Williams? The Comp Plan you stated was certified or recertified in April of 2024?
Yes, sir. It was adopted in '24.
When will that be recertified again, or is there?
2040.
2040 is the final game on that one. Okay. And the same thing for the Future Land Use?
Yes, because that is coinciding with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. So we're about 15 years out from anything?
There are updates that happen quicker, but a full redo of the Comprehensive Plan is typically going into 2040.
Ms. Harden?
I apologize. I don't mean to, to correct Ms. Williams. The, we do have to go into a rewrite in a 10-year cycle. So it will be 2034. The 2040 planning era is because we had data that was stretching out to that era acre. And we will revisit as required, as, you know, we look at it every year. We have to revisit it in five and rewrite based on new data in 10. It kind of goes with the census data updates.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Tinklinberg?
Thank you. Ms. Harden, you might, or April, I'm not sure who, would need to answer my question. So with those updates to the Comp Plan, would we be looking at the land use maps and some of these other growth areas that now and would have the infrastructure in place to no longer be marked as rural? Those updates would happen at that time also?
They may.
That, that is one of the primary uses of the updates is to evaluate what you've been able to check off of your goals, as well as look at things that are deficiencies in the plan that you can change. However, that is another reason for the Comprehensive Plan amendments. In the meantime, it's to see things that maybe have changed, that their status has changed, the identity, the topography, the surrounding areas have changed. That it, there is a section toward the front of it that identifies it as a living document as well. So you're not, you're not burdened or restricted to that five-year or 10-year update. You have the ability to change with an amendment if you, if you feel so the need.
Commissioners, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is the applicant here? And thanks, Ms. Harden, as well.
Dean Aldrich, 900 East North Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm with G3 Engineering. I appreciate the council seeing me tonight. Basically, what we're here to see if we can change it to a growth thing. I've got a presentation put together that shows a site plan that we've already gone through the sketch plan process. And on the 160 acres, we've got 310 lots. And you will see the same plan again when I come back for preliminary plat. It's not going to change. We've got quite a few wetlands on it.
Hang tight for a minute. They'll get you.
Okay. Pardon? So basically- So basically, Old Hickory Road is on the right-hand side. There's an existing house, which is the white parcel in the, right next to the blue square. We're leaving that alone right now. Got two accesses to it. We're using a little bit bigger lots for the subdivision, 77-foot lot and a 72-foot lot. We're using it almost a two-and-a-half-acre amenity center, so it's not going to be along with the Roseland amenity centers. We are part of the Lennar Development, but we're not going to be a 55-plus at this time. We have significant amount of wetlands on our site, which we are leaving alone. The only impact that we're going to have is basically the crossing down at that one piece going across. We're putting in a regional pump station for the property. If you look at the site, there's a dotted line that shows an outline at the lower part of the thing on the right-hand side corner. That's what actually gravities to Roseland Development. So that part of the development is in the Roseland watershed. We're in talks with Lancaster County right now. And if you would do one more. Yeah, there should be like four. No. Should just scroll down on the right-hand side there. Yep. So our proposed lift station is going to be the upper left-hand corner of our site and then we're actually going to pump to the Roseland lift station. And at the Roseland lift station, we're going to tie into the Roseland force main. The Lancaster County Water and Sewer actually upgraded the force main that they installed there for this development. So it was anticipated that this watershed was going to be developed and go into the system. So basically, there's the treatment available to us there. So it was, and that's kind of the gray area that you get into with the Comprehensive Plan. When the Comprehensive Plan started, Roseland was just starting. When the Comprehensive Plan was adopted last year, they just, they hadn't finished it yet. So at that time, we did not have water and sewer. There were major water upgrades along Old Hickory Road that gave us significant amount of water. A lot of the water was brought down Old Hickory Road to serve a major corridor of economic developments behind our property. We're going to basically do something that at least Lancaster County Water and Sewer had plans for in the future. Can we, and my next couple of slides here are basically out of the Comprehensive Plan. If you look at the Comprehensive Plan there, there's a star in, that's where our site is located at. So we're not in the Lancaster area. We're not in the Indianland area. We're in the city of Lancaster area. So what we're looking to do is basically for rural, one of the criterias for rural is not having sewer. And when you're doing these master plans, everybody works hard to do it, you got to draw the line somewhere on there to say from a growth area to rural to so forth. The purple behind our site is an economic development area and what they're looking to do there is put in jobs. And with jobs, you need to have people be able to live relatively close to where you have, which hopefully, I know we have traffic problems. They can drive to their problem right now. They can drive to the new economic development area. Can I have the next? So basically, what that shows is, and this is out of your plan, it's a growth disparity as far as how much is growing in Lancaster County. And the panhandle is outgrowing all of us right now, where Lancaster County itself is growing, but it's not growing as fast as the upper part. What it says up in the upper state is the state basically says that the population they expect by 2035 is to be 130,000 people. One of the problems that you have is that when you have economic growth or try to get economic growth within the county, you need to have places for people to live. If you don't have places to people to live, then they're coming from other parts of the county and causing more traffic. One more time. And what that shows is basically what the Comprehensive Plan suggests is basically for the rural part of the county, which is the light green. There's some light green behind my property or our property, which we're in the light green. But where they're looking to preserve the majority of it is to the east of Lancaster Highway, 521 going up there. The development between us, the growth section, and the economic development section was basically done as rural development in my mind is because they didn't have sewer. That's, do you have any questions for me? Oh, and then the last one. This was also in the packet, which basically says that where you have housing changes and so forth, and this was done at 2020, so things have changed dramatically, is that in the Van Wyk or lower part of the county, you actually have a housing shortage, believe it or not. I mean, everybody, there's a lot of houses that want to be developed and there's a lot of houses that, you know, there's only so much availability for traffic and so forth. But that's per your 2024 development plan. Any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Tinklinburg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bear with me. So we recently had another Comp Plan Amendment come before us that, you know, we all voted unanimously that it was too soon. However, I hear that with some of these infrastructure changes that, you know, it does force us to think a little differently about this scenario. My holdup personally is the lack of other infrastructure and emergency services to this area. I live up in Indianland and we have, you know, I'm the victim of the fast growth and we live with the traffic and emergency services are, you know, they're picking up, but they're not even what they should be. So it makes me nervous to vote for something that would be adding to that problem. So I guess I would love to hear what is being offered to help with that situation.
With an increased revenue with the houses and so forth, right now, the tax base of this property is basically agricultural. So what the person who owns it right now is paying on it doesn't contribute to the development of that base. Once that development goes in, there will be a significant amount of increased revenue towards as far as tax-wise. And I understand. I mean, the problem is, it's a problem. Okay? And if I'm going to tell you that the cure is, is that more tax money is going to come, it will help. But, I mean, more than likely, it's going to be, there's going to be another fire station. If it's a criteria where we could talk to the Roseland Development and see if there's room to put a fire station in there, maybe that's one of them.
I think I was looking to hear what the developer is offering to contribute in that partnership with the county to help meet those needs when you obviously want to be here. So that's what I'm looking to hear.
I'm not the developer. I'm the engineer.
Hired by the developer. Yep.
But more than, if, we would be more than willing to sit down and talk to you and have this development agreement. Okay? And we could have that, if we can get through the rezoning process or some state or some point, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to sit down with you. But I can't speak for them.
No problem.
I mean, the development agreement, it has been brought up. And I can ask them to come see you guys because we'll be back next month.
Appreciate it.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Richards?
So where I have some hesitation in this besides all the other things that have been mentioned, I've seen the layout at Roseland. It is based on, it has a rural look to it and everything like this. Your layout is an extremely urban layout. It is not a rural layout at all. And so I, it's, this is something I would expect to see in a suburb of Charlotte, not in what's currently farmland. So that's the biggest hesitation I have on it, even though this is still mostly a rural area and this is not a rural layout at all.
I understand. I mean, unfortunately, what we live in is the cost of land and the amount of density we have to get to make things work, to be somewhat affordable. That unfortunately is what we have to do to make it work. If we would make those twice the size, the road costs are the same. It would double the price to the lot and basically make it extremely expensive piece of ground.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I don't, I don't know if this is a question as much as just piggybacking on the subject of emergency services. And I don't know if this is the time to question, but looking at this layout and just having, crossing this, is it a stream?
Yes, ma'am.
Crossing a stream, I don't see any other egress. And it looks like an emergency services nightmare if something were to happen around that area and all of these houses would be basically trapped back in there.
So what we did is when we went through the sketch plan review, we actually sat down with the fire chief and he had comments about our rear things. And what we're doing is we're actually widening the area through there and we're actually putting multiple fire hydrants on either side of the streets. So he was satisfied with our revised plan. So basically, a lot of times, you're not supposed to have a dead-end street with that many developments because if something happens down there, you can't get a fire truck through. So what we're doing is we're making the lane wider through there. So if anything happens through there, there's room enough for a fire truck to get around. So he was satisfied with our development plan.
Commissioners, anymore?
And I'll pass it on to my developers. If you want to sit down and have a development agreement as far as what we can do to help out with the problem with public service, I'm sure they'll be more than willing to sit down whoever we need to.
Thank you, sir. We now consider ourselves in the public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Would Barbara Skinnell please come up? Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, Ms. Williams.
All right. While we're in public hearing, it is a note that you did receive one electronic comment regarding this issue. You all should have a paper copy from Van Wyk. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Skinnell? Did I say that correctly?
My name is Barbara Skinnell. I live at 8016 Carolina Lakes Way, Indianland, South Carolina. Honorable Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, the Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan was adopted on April 22, 2024. Providing services to community listed, served, is listed as a guiding principle of the Comprehensive Plan, which on page 15 states, "The provision of high-quality public services and infrastructure is a key responsibility of Lancaster County government, and we will work both internally and externally in cooperation with our partners to ensure that there are provided an efficient and fiscally responsible manner that meets the needs of the community." I'm going to be presenting things on Lancaster County schools. Are struggling right now to meet current demand based upon residential development that has occurred since the 2020 census. There are thousands more residential units that have already been approved by the City of Lancaster and Lancaster County that are in various stages of development. For the purposes of this presentation, I am focusing on the estimated 5,200, 5,200 unbuilt residential units already approved south of Highway 5 in Lancaster County Council Districts 1, 2, and 5. This information was obtained from the most recent Lancaster County Development Services Subdivision Summary dated March 2025, the City of Lancaster Planning Director Louis Streeter, and Lancaster County School District Director of Community Relations Rodney Graves. The spreadsheet they have provided and that you have now identifies the names of the developments, the jurisdiction that approved each, the Lancaster County Council District in which each development is located, the number and type of residential units approved, and unbuilt residential units in each development. The spreadsheet also identifies the assigned schools for each development, each school's capacity, the number of students attending each school as of today, and available seats at this time. As you can see in this data, the Lancaster School District south of Highway 5 will not be able to accommodate the number of students that will be enrolling in the coming years from the already approved unbuilt residential units. Schools located north of Highway 5 are already at capacity. As such, the proposed Old Hickory development would place even further strain on existing schools. As such, I strongly urge you to recommend denial of CP-2024 Old Hickory Comprehensive Plan Amendment application. Since I've got a few more moments, I'm going to address the thing about the fire stations. Based on our current population up in the panhandle, we should have four going on five based on the development we have already got and the population we have. We have two and we're struggling to figure out how to get a third one. And I want to thank all of you who actually, when the presentation that you gave, what you said is priority one and two and three when you were looking at for the CIP. Thank you all for considering that. Just as we're concerned about what's happening in the panhandle, we're concerned that it's going to come to all of you, all of us. Because it's not all of, it's not north or south. It's all of us. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Kevin Gribbin? Name and address, sir. You have three minutes.
Kevin Gribbin, Indianland 10414 Bethpage Drive. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm presenting information about the impacts of existing and approved development on Lancaster County First Responder Services. Information presented is, has already been approved and recommended within the 2026 fiscal budget to the City Council on May 7 of this year. Also, with regard to requests from the Information, Freedom of Information Act, the city first or county first responders include the coroner's office, emergency medical, fire, and sheriff. In the fiscal year 2024, there were 969 coroner cases, 19,897 EMS calls, 6,300 fire service calls, and 81,000 sheriff calls. The City of Lancaster has their own fire and police departments with the county fire and sheriff's department assisting at different times as required. Emergency medical and coroner services are provided by the Lancaster County. Six EMS ambulances responded to approximately 8,800 calls within Lancaster County District 5 and the City of Lancaster. within Lancaster County District 5 and the City of Lancaster. The fire department has two stations that generally respond to service calls in the southern end of District 1 and District 5. Both are staffed by volunteers rather than career firefighters. When a call comes in, volunteers must drive to the station to get the appropriate fire rig and then respond to the call. The sheriff's department has a manpower shortage. The national average is 2.6 law enforcement officers per thousand citizens. Regional average here is 1.8 officers. Lancaster County has 1.39 officers. In addition, it takes approximately one year to train a new officer to be able to go out on the street by himself or herself. From this data, it appears that the Lancaster County first responders south of Highway 5 will not be able to accommodate the number of calls received from existing residential units and already approved residential units in various stages of development. The proposal for Old Hickory development would place even more strain on the county first responder services. I strongly urge you to recommend denial of CP 2024-0367 Old Hickory Comprehensive Plan Amendment application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No one else has signed up to speak on this case, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Does applicant have a response? Commissioners, you have before you case CP 2024-0367 Old Hickory LLC Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Ms. Richards and Ms. Kiratun. Any discussion, commissioners?
So many, so much.
I'll start. The town of VanWack has forwarded a letter to the Planning Commission, and I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's fairly lengthy, but I will skim through it. "Greetings, members of the VanWack Town Council and Planning Commission. After review of the proposed 159-acre development, respectfully request the Lancaster County Council and Planning Commission decline to advance the application. Thank you for receiving and incorporating the following comments into your deliberations on the above amendment. The town of VanWack would request that the county keep our in zoning in areas that surround the town to provide rural living to county residents." It continues, but I think that speaks enough to what it says. "I have spoken with a significant portion of the residents in the area, and they do not speak any differently than the people in the north side of the Panhandle do. The traffic, the utilities, the EMS services, these things are all suffering already, and the addition of any count of houses is not going to help." Ms. Kiratun.
Yes, so my comments are around the work that we put into this comprehensive plan that was just approved, not even a year ago. And we just belabored the entire process, and I thought we did a really good job. I get that there's new infrastructure going in, but that infrastructure hasn't even proven itself out at this point because Roslyn, there's nobody in that area yet. I'd like to see us settle the dust before we start continuing to bring more and more people in, so we understand what we are dealing with.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Ms. Lou.
Again, I agree that we turn down a development because all the citizens' comments and so forth leading up to the adoption last year. And now, to me, it seems it flies in the face of all their input to turn around and say, oh, but we'll okay this one.
Anyone else? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tinklinburg.
Thank you. I think I made most of my points a few moments ago when I spoke. I think that we have to be careful and tread, you know, cautiously moving forward with development as it moves south. You know, it's one thing that you have the right to develop your land, and that is very true. However, there are many lessons that we learned from Indian Land, and we have to creatively problem-solve how to develop smartly and make sure that we have all of our infrastructure in place, so we're not growing too fast. So I just want to remind the commission of that as we move forward.
Ms. Lou.
And in addressing the fire and rescue, we were just asked to prioritize. If money can be found, where do we want to put it? And we were talking about the Indian Land fire stations. We're still playing catch-up, or the county budget is still playing catch-up with fire stations in another part of the county. So this one would just be added to the list of needing more fire stations, and the money just isn't there right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any other statements? All right. Commissioners, we have a motion to approve.
Can I just make a comment? Because I want, I do want all the developers who, because we are not anti-development, we're not that. But this gives you a great idea of what you need to come in with your development agreement in to get us in pocket. If you want us, you hear us complaining about the roads, you hear us complaining about EMS, public services, you hear us complaining about schools. Offer Lancaster County something to make it appeasing, to make it interesting. Because guess what? I don't mind voting no whenever. I just want it to make sense.
To make it a partnership.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, commissioners, you have before you a motion to approve CP 2024-0367 Old Hickory LLC Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Roll call vote, please.
Jason Cavalier.
Against.
Yakeem Akuritun.
Against.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
Against.
Michelle Richards.
Against.
Sheila Henson.
Against.
Frances Lu.
Against.
Motion is denied. The recommendation to not approve will be pushed up to county council. Our next item on the agenda is RZ 2025-0636, Green Pond Road.
Commissioners, be gentle with my new planner. This is his first one ever.
Yay.
We do have a bullhorn that we can, you know.
Okay, our case before us, we have case RZ 2025-0636 on Green Pond Road where the applicant is proposing to rezone a two-acre portion of a larger property located off Green Pond Road from medium-density residential to rural neighborhood in order to conjoin a adjacent property owned by a, one of the occupants of the property. Just to give a brief overview, the property, or the tract is located at 7680 Green Pond Road. It's two acres owned by Margaret Morris, Gloria O'Keefe, Gloria Keefe, and Wanda Griffin. Again, the intent is to conjoin a two-acre portion of a 36.87-acre tract of property from MDR to RN owned by one of the siblings to allow the remainder of approximately 34 acres of the family land to be marketed for development. It's currently zoned MDR, and they want to rezone it to rural neighborhood. Here are some of the location photos. You see, we have the subject parcel located there in red. Just to give you a little history on the parcel, the parcel is located off of Green Pond Road, approximately 2,000 feet northeast from the intersection of Henry Harris Road. The applicant is requesting to cojoin a two-acre portion of the existing adjacent lot owned by one of the siblings to have it rezoned medium-density residential to rural neighborhood. The remainder of the property, they're going to try to have it marketed for development in future.
First time or not, there's no excuse for that.
Just give you a brief analysis of this tract, the parcel. Again, it's zoned medium-density residential. I'm basically repeating all of this information because it's a very simple request here. The property zoning is consistent with the future land use in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan of rural. With having said that, our staff recommends that there be an approval here. Is there any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
No need to be nervous, you're among friends.
I know.
We'll start simple. How much wood could a woodchuck chuck on Green Pond Road? Just picking on you.
I know, Jason.
No questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant here? Please come up if you have something to say. State your name and address.
Margaret Morris, 7680 Green Pond Road, Indian Land, South Carolina, 29707.
Do you have anything to add about the case?
I just want two acres added to my one acre that my parents gave me 60 years ago. My husband built buildings. We used to raise ostriches, and he built buildings. And those buildings are on my sister's property, and my sister's property now. And I want the buildings to belong to me. That's my request.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I apologize, commissioners, did y'all have any questions for the applicant?
It's my understanding that this does not allow for more growth on that plot of land or more density. If anything, it's lower.
All right. We consider ourselves in the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak on this case, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you agenda item RZ 2025-0636, Green Pond Road. Do I hear a motion?
I moved.
Second.
I moved to approve the request to rural neighborhood.
Ms. Lou, motion to approve, second from Ms. Richards. Any discussion?
Do you know if the record needed to say there was an email about this one?
That one? Any comments around the email? Give y'all a second.
I'm looking at the letter rather quickly, and it, I think the concern was the more traffic and so forth. But this is not applicable because they don't want to add any development at this time. It's just a rezoning, not to build more homes at this point.
Ms. Williams, is that a correct statement?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is. This is just to combine the property so that her buildings are on her property, as she mentioned. It is actually a reduction in density going from the MDR to the rural neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Commissioners, any more questions or comments? Okay, commissioners, you have before you motion to approve RZ 2025-0636, Green Pond Road. Show our hands. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Ms. Lynette Henson is not here. Motion is approved unanimously. Our next item is RZ 2025-0761, Andrade. Did I get that right? Potter Road? Was that right? Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. This request is, comes to us from a family who owns a parcel, a seven-acre parcel at 813 Potter Road. And I'm going to go ahead and go to the map here. You can, I've got it upside down, okay. If you look at the map, everything to the left of Potter Road that is west is zoned LDR, and everything to the right is zoned rural residential. This family would like to accommodate future division of their land and have the possibility of placing a mobile home. They would be looking at dividing it for family members to live there. They're not developing it for, you know, in the sense of creating a mobile home park or anything like that. This is purely so they can have other family members live together nearby. Since it is going from LDR to rural residential, it is compatible with the future land use, which is rural, because we're moving in a more rural direction. This gives you a location on the left, and then two site photos that were taken when we posted signs on the property. You can see there's a lot of open space surrounding it. The properties directly across the road are very large parcels with a home located on a multi-acre parcel. Keep in mind that everything in light blue in that zoning map is zoned RR. And any of those areas can accept placement of a mobile home if the owners so choose. I did an analysis, as you requested, at the workshop. I did a numbered map, which should be in your packet. And we'll discuss that a little bit. So 83% of the lots are less than 10 acres, so relatively small parcels. 45% of the lots are less than five acres, 13 out of 29 parcels. So this area already has smaller parcels, more to the left of the road in the LDR than the right. Changing this to a more rural designation would keep the parcels at a minimum of one acre, whereas LDR allows. acre, whereas LDR allows, the minimum lot size is 29,000 square feet, which translates to about 3/4 of an acre. Two properties in the area are non-conforming and having multiple homes on one lot. Those will have to be subdivided at some point in the future if the owners want to make any changes to the property. They've been grandfathered in with two residences on the property, but that violates our UDO, so it's a non-conformity. So keep in mind that at least, there's at least five homes which will have to have their own lots. So there will be some subdivision happening in the future. One property is non-conforming in acreage on the LDR side. It is below the minimum area for LDR. And of the properties examined, which is basically just along this section of Potter Road, there is one existing mobile home, which is a non-conformity on the LDR side. And there are four modular homes in that stretch of. I did not go farther out than Potter Road. There are mobile homes. Like I said, rural residential zoning allows mobile homes, so in the larger area around this property, there are more mobile homes. So you had asked specifically for more information about the makeup. I also, on the information that I provided, the table that I provided showed the relative square footage of the home, so you have an idea of home sizes and the variety in the This area's future land use is designated as rural. It is a zone that can be transitional where growth of low-density residential development, agricultural, rural, and crossroad commercial uses are permitted. The future land use plan was adopted in April 2024. This proposal would be in line with the Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Plan. However, the zoning directly around it is all LDR, so there's an argument to be made either way. It does not create any significant impact on traffic or schools. The site access is on Potter Road. Water is provided by Lancaster County Water and Sewer District. Sewer is not available and this site is served by septic system. We make no recommendation on the request to rezone seven acres as considerations for both approval and denial exist. I'm here for questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff? Thank you, ma'am.
I believe the Andrade family members, some family members are here, so they may wish to speak.
Would any of the applicant like to come up and speak? Name and address, sir.
Good evening. Aaron Loera, 505 Stephen Foster Way in Indian Trail, North Carolina. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
It's okay. Are you the applicant?
The son.
The son.
Yes. My father had a prostate procedure, so unfortunately, they couldn't make it today. So, yes, they just bought this property and they want to bring all the kids back together. So we're fairly spread out, so he wants to bring them back. And I believe a manufactured home, mobile home, will be the best possibility for all of us to be able to be back in the same place. I don't know if I've got any questions that I could possibly answer or...
How many siblings do you have, sir?
Four.
And you're trying to get them all back there?
Yes, sir. I'm trying to. I was the first one to move up this way. My parents visited, they liked it. And my two other brothers and sisters, they want to move up here as well, so I'm little by little. I'm trying to accomplish it.
I like being close to family, too. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I believe we were told at the workshop how many homes could be put on this property before it would be considered a mobile home park?
There has to be a lot created for each home.
There has to be a lot for each home. The maximum number of lots that can be created is five under the minor subdivision process. So there's an existing home, they could create four additional lots and have a home on each.
It seemed like we'd touched on something about that this is a certain amount before it would be considered a mobile home park.
So this is not, they could not develop a mobile home park under this zoning district that they're moving to.
But they could have four.
They could have four lots, each with a home on it.
But if it's designated rural neighborhood, then they only need one acre per mobile home.
The minimum lot size is one acre. They have a seven-acre parcel. They can create lots as small as one acre, but if they divide it evenly, they're going to be over an acre. So it's up to how they work out with the surveyor, but as long as they meet the lot requirements, they can have up to five total, the existing plus four more.
So it doesn't even, it won't even...
It won't even reach the density.
Right.
For RR. Yeah. Got it.
Anyone else?
For clarifying my words, I couldn't find them. I couldn't find them.
Hard word, hard word.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Very much.
We now consider ourselves into public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais, name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Gregory Willis, 1507 Stinson Road, Lancaster, South Carolina. Came up this evening to oppose the rezoning for the 813 Potter Road. When you guys rezone that to low-density residence, it was probably, my guess would be to continue the beautification of Lancaster County. I had a big other kind of speech in the direction, but I didn't realize he was going to try to put more than one mobile home on this lot, which is just baffling to me. I mean, I understand what you want to do, but with each address, does he understand that there has to be an engineered septic system on each one? We've gone through the, we just built the house out there about three or four years ago, and we followed every Lancaster County requirement, including the engineered septic system, southsize, modular, everything. You know, I don't think that it's a good fit for out there. All those are single-family homes. I get the, across the street is all farmland is why it's ruled, classified as rural residential. Farmland, the guys all the way down from the corner, probably, I don't know, probably 100 acres is all with animals, farms, stuff like that. I think the, up to five, who knows, single-wide, double-wide homes on an acre lot is not the place to be if they want to, you know, develop some type of a neighborhood or a area outside of this that is already zoned RR and then have at it. But I just don't think that it's a good fit for our area right now. I've talked to every available resident in our area, and every one of them is not in favor of it. In fact, there's a gentleman here that's part of our neighborhood who's here also. You know, the cost-effectiveness, I don't think is in good stands with what we're trying to do out there. I appreciate your time and I hope this is a, you know, I guess, from the beginning, he had a larger project when he moved out there, an agenda, and I just hoped it doesn't pass. And several of our other residents feel the same way. I appreciate it. Any questions for me? I don't know.
No, sir, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aaron, I believe that you signed up here as well to speak. You're welcome to come back up for an additional three minutes if you'd like. State your name and address for me again, just so...
Aaron Loera, 505 Stephen Foster Way, Indian Trail, North Carolina. I understand the concern. Of course, this will not happen. It'd probably take four, five, six years before we all gather together. I will be the first one to move there with my parents. And I did not know that there was an issue with the neighbors, that they were trying to do or accomplish something like this. I did not know there was a problem with the sewer and water and all that, so I don't know what else to say. Like I said, once again, I understand the concern that there'll be more homes and more septic tanks and sewer that might not be a perfect fit, like the gentleman said, but this is not going to happen overnight. It's going to be a few years before any of this comes together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, hi, I'm Scott Carnes. I live at 657 Potter Road, right down the street from the rezoning area. And we saw the sign up saying that the area was going to be rezoned. I'm myself, I've got four kids. I would love to have my kids stay with me, too. But the rezoning of the area goes into the future development of our area. We're looking at, you know, there said four mobile homes coming in for the four kids, you know, four families coming in. Having people coming in and moving into those areas and then living there for a few years and then reselling them and then somebody further subdividing that, this is already just one mobile home away from my trailer park. We said five was the trailer park, correct? How many? How many makes it? Okay, but we're very close to that, you know, because we're just like one or two homes away from being a trailer park, from that. We have new homes that are going up all the time over there. And we've talked to other neighbors. We've got another one back there that's opposing it. Two or three other ones that are out of town currently that we told them this was happening. They're like, oh, no, we're in Florida. And it's not that we're not being neighborly. We would love to have more neighbors in the area. We just do not want to have it so further subdivided into trailers, if that makes sense. I don't know if we can come up with another plan or something like that, but I do not, I would like you guys not to recommend that going further, okay? I've got six acres myself that I could go ahead and divide those and put six, you know, several of the trailers on that for my kids in the future, but I don't want to do that. Just because of the area that we're in, because the area is continuing to grow. And it just seems like we're going backwards instead of going forward, you know, trying to rezone the area to something less than what it already is. So that's all I have to say. If you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to ask, have a answer.
No, sir, but thank you for your comments. Mr. Loera, I would give you an opportunity to respond if you would like to. You're welcome to come back up and take a minute to respond to the citizens' comments.
Yes, okay. The plan is to bring everybody. That doesn't mean it's going to happen. That's the dream. And to be realistic, it might only be a total of three homes in that lot, realistically. Just shooting here with some hopes and dreams that everybody will come together, but realistically, it might only be three. The house that's currently there plus two mobile homes. And that's probably all that's ever going to happen, really. The plan is to have everybody together. My father's idea is for every kid to have a piece of something. That doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to build something there. My brother, he's in love with the city. He does not like the woods, so I know that's not going to happen. My sister, she lives in Miami. She's all about the city. That might not, never happen. So realistically, it'll only be three homes in that lot. I don't know what else to add, but I think that's all I can say for now.
It's good enough for us, sir. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, you have before you cases? Huh? I thought I said that. I apologize, I thought I said that. I'm hot. It's really hot over here.
Yes, you are.
That's everyone who signed up to speak. We consider ourselves out of public comment, public hearing. See, it's still hot. So back to what I was saying, Commissioners, you have before you cases, RZ20250761, Potter Road. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Ms. Sheila Henson and Ms. Tinklinberg. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I just want to go on the record, just to clarify, this is going from LDR to RR, which is not less than, right? It's like, it's just a, right. Right. So it's not going from, yeah, you'll have more space and they have seven acres. So I don't know, for me, I just keep hearing like that we're trying to do something that's not being said.
Wait, 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 hang on, sir. Commissioners, any other comments, discussions?
I have a real tough time with this. I think it would be wonderful, as the applicant has said, to have family all together. Staff, does this mean with seven acres, there could be seven?
So a single parcel, RUDO limits a minor subdivision process, which is the minor plat. You have a piece of land, you want to divide it into a few lots, to five lots or fewer.
Okay.
If they wanted to create more lots than that, they would have to create an entire major subdivision plan with everything that you see for preliminary plats, interior roads, lighting, you know. No one is going to do that on a seven-acre parcel.
Correct. Correct. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, so the maximum number of lots that can be created out of a parcel this size is five.
Okay.
Through the minor subdivision process.
Thank you.
So.
Ms. Richards.
Leave. I'll leave. I was still, so I'm really struggling with this. As staff has said, considerations for both approval and denial exist. If for the whole area on that side of the street to be zoned low-density and then in the middle have an area that could have five homes on it, it doesn't seem, like the gentleman said, it seems like moving backward instead of forward if you're trying for beautification and so forth. And even though there might only be three homes on it, we have to take into consideration the maximum that's allowed because once we make the approval, it's for five. And I just, I struggle because of the family side of it versus all the other residents who are zoned one way and thought that's what they were moving into.
If I may help, the maximum density for the current zone is 1.5 units per acre. If the applicant had four acres, he could get seven homes on there if he goes through the proper procedure. the proper procedure. The maximum unit, or the maximum number of units per acre for RR is one per acre. And as Ms. Bryan stated, unless you're going to go into the, um, major subdivision review process, um, they're going to get five under, five or less under a minor subdivision action. Going to a major subdivision action would require a road, a full civil, and full civil review, the same as you would with any large scale. So, the density difference on the books is one and a half units per acre currently versus one unit per acre, which is what is proposed.
So currently, it's LDR and they could have, they could have what? On, for seven acres on LDR?
In a major subdivision process, you could get 1.5 units per acre.
If they want for a major subdivision, but still being zoned, LDR.
So, in either zoning district?
Right.
The maximum number of lots you can create is five.
So if it remained LDR?
They still could only get five lots?
Under a minor subdivision.
Under a minor subdivision.
They could get 10 under a major.
So why do, I'm so sorry that I'm not seeing this. Why does it have to be changed from LDR?
Because they want the, because LDR does not allow mobile homes. It allows modular homes and stick built.
So?
So if, and everything on the other side of the road is already zoned RR, and anyone by right can place a mobile home in that zoning district. They won't necessarily, but, and keep in mind, although there, we're looking at the current lot sizes that exist on the left-hand side of the road in LDR, all of those can be further subdivided.
So that, you have reminded me of what we went over in the workshop. This could be accomplished on LDR with no change, as long as the applicant went from modular homes instead of mobile homes.
Correct.
There would, we wouldn't have to make any change at all.
They're aware of that option.
Okay.
So they wanted to have more flexibility in the housing type.
Right.
That's why they asked for this change.
I think it just sounds like a, a good compromise that...
Either, either LDR or, or RR, they can get five lots.
Mm-hmm.
They can get that number of lots in either case. Anyone on that, you know, on that side of the road, any, anyone who has enough acreage can do a minor subdivision of up to five lots.
I, I had forgotten that during the workshop. To me, it seems like a great compromise that it would, not granting it would not prevent the family from being together. It would just prevent mobile homes into modular homes.
Or stick built.
Or stick built, yes.
Ms. Richards, I'm sorry, Ms. Lou, are you finished?
Yes, I am.
I apologize for the...
My question is, what are the current UDO requirements for, uh, for a, a mobile home?
It is not this, none of the setbacks or standards or anything, of lot standards are any different.
I'm talking about the, the requirements, like, does it have to have permanent skirting around the bottom? I'm saying, I don't know what our UDO requirements are for when you install...
Allison's going to check that first.
A, a mobile home. I meant to look that up today and just didn't have time.
Um, this, the, the section of the code that relies, that reflects on all manufactured homes, um, is that they, they all have to be signed up or set up with accordance with the latest South Carolina regulations for manufactured homes, the uniform standards, codes for manufactured housing, and regulations that all wheels, axles, lights, and other mechanisms designed for transporting must be removed, that skirting strip decks or porches shall be installed before the final inspection and shall be properly maintained. They have a permanent foundation that should be tied down per manufacturing instructions. Under, shoot, sorry, just scrolled too fast. Underpinning is, uh, allowed with, or is required with certain, um, materials being listed there. There is an age limit for moving them, um, that you, that we have talked about before. Sorry, I got itchy scan finger. But there's an entire section. Manufactured homes are not a flat-out allowed use. They are a permitted with right or special review that has a list, a whole list of requirements that has to go through.
While you have that up, Ms. Harden, is there anything about screening and buffering?
The buffers on, on different zones required, when they're butting each other, are required in the Section 7, I believe. There's no buffering required. For residential uses, there's no buffering. This is also considered a residential use.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can I make, can I make a comment?
Ms. Kiratson?
Yes, um, Ms. Harden, would there be a possibility that you could come and do some education for us on, um, culture? I am triggered, maybe, because what I just hear in this conversation is just so much judgment. And what I'm trying to understand is, um, how we can fairly allow people to come into this county if, if we are letting commercial developers come in as they choose, and these are regular people coming in to build what they're going to build. I just need some, I need all of us to be on the same... I don't need to be on the same page, um, what words am I trying to say? I just need us to have some cultural understanding about what that looks like. Everybody ain't got it like that. I, I personally don't. So, it just makes sense to me to have a conversation and put it out on the table. Beautification is, in my mind, mobile home, modular home, that does not mean non-beautification in Lancaster County. So I just need to hear that conversation had.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want me to provide some input now, or you want to do it in the future?
No, let's save that for the other, let's move through the cases here, please.
And I was going to say, and Ms. Kiratson, that is why I asked the question that I did, was to find out what our UDO requirements are, because I, I've seen some mobile homes that have been set up very nice and, and cannot distract, but we've also seen the opposite end of that spectrum. So I understand the people's concerns. That's why I was asking to see what our requirements were, if we had some UDO requirements to make it look, you know, some, some places they, you have to like brick under the mobile home to make it look better.
But we do have building codes, right, Ms... I'm sorry, that to let you down and make you get back up.
I need the exercise.
Okay.
Um, they, yeah, we do have building codes that have to be followed. We have, um, site, uh, requirements that have to be followed as to putting it within the setbacks. If it's connected to a septic field or a septic tank, there has to be allowance for that as well. Um, we have requirements for underpinning, the requirements that require you to take off the, um, the travel trailer and the wheels and the, and the things that get the house to the lot there. Once you have taken that completely off, as, if my memory serves me correct, because this happened to me in my former job, once you've taken that off, you can actually apply to have that, um, uh, connected to your property in the tax rolls.
Title retirement.
Title retirement. So instead of it being titled, thank you so much, Ms. Henson. So instead of it being titled as a, um, a manufactured home and license for movement, once it's on the ground, then it becomes part of your home. And then the property together, um, either improve, increases or decreases based upon the consideration there is not about the, the automatic, um, loss of funding or loss of revenue, excuse me, uh, like a manufactured home that is not connected to the ground. Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this case, commissioners? Ms. Tinklinburg?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if mine is a question, more so as a general statement. What I understand about this case is the applicant is requesting, um, something that is already across the street. There is already adjacent rural residential, which allows by right what he is requesting to do. So it's within, um, this immediate surrounding neighborhood, um, already. Um, I did drive out there and, um, I just, I, I struggle, as well as some of the other commissioners, I, I don't like hearing, um, judgments and, and it, it's, it's hard to listen to. And, and I come here and try to make decisions, um, with peace of mind and trying to think of, of everybody and the situation as they bring it. So I just want everybody to, um, think about that. Thank you.
The only thing, the point I want to make is, I, he said, I think he said five mobile homes, six acres of land, is that correct?
Seven acres.
Seven acres of land. Well, when you, and, and I'm sure that it's, it's one mobile home per, um, I mean, you know, and, and acre, you know, is a, is a, it's not a lot. It's not just a lot. And there's, and acre's a pretty big, big, big place. So it's not like you're going to see a trailer here and a trailer here. It's not, it, it's not going to be able to, to be like that, unless the land's like that, I don't know, but, um...
There is an existing stick-built residence. That will be one lot.
Right, exactly.
Or up to, maybe not even, four additional lots. There is potential for four additional lots. Each of those can have stick-built, modular, already. That can already exist. The only question is whether this family gets the option for some family members to use a mobile home if they can afford a stick-built or a modular. So, that's the maximum, yeah.
Anyone else?
I feel like I have to speak up. Seeing who has spoken up here, I feel like I'm being painted with a judgmental brush. And so, um, I just want to say that, as I said, I think it's wonderful to have family together, but I, myself, cannot deny what we've heard from the people who live there. And I don't think it's judgmental to want to protect your investment, because a house or home is the biggest investment most people will ever make. And so I don't think they're being judgmental. I think they're protect, protecting their investment for themselves, for their children, for their grandchildren. So I don't think we should say that anyone is being judgmental, just trying to protect everybody here.
Thank you, commissioners. I have one question, Ms. Harden, if I could get you to come up for me? Bring your laptop with you.
Come with work.
Would you shed some light on the definition differences between modular home and mobile home?
Yes, sir. Modular homes are created in a factory, um, and are shipped to site to be assembled or fin, finally assembled onsite as you would a stick-built home. You have to have a, a foundation that has been inspected by the building inspectors that accommodates the design that you have ordered. The house is delivered to the site, placed down on the ground. It is delivered on the back of a, a tractor trailer or some other large vehicle. The wheels are not attached to the home. The wheels are, are on the vehicle that's carrying the home. The stick-built modular homes are built to IRC standards, uh, the International Residential Code, and, um, they are inspected as such. Uh, once they're on the ground, they're there, period. A manufactured or a mobile home, uh, some people have called them trailers, um, those homes are also built in a factory. Um, they are, the, the structural requirements for those are different in certain zones in the US based on hazards. Uh, for instance, there are wind zone provisions that apply not only to residential, but there's also wind zone provisions in the manufactured home zones that you have to have a stronger structure if you're going into a hurricane zone, for instance. These homes are finished in the factory and attached to a frame with wheels that can be pulled behind a, a tractor trailer or other large vehicle to a site. In our code, once you get it to the site, you are supposed to remove the wheels and the curb, and the cribbing and everything else and put it down on the site. Um, not all counties have that requirement. Uh, some requirements allow you to maintain the wheels and the frame and then put skirting around it to hide it. Um, there are some other counties, I'm sure, out there somewhere, that don't even require that much. Um, but the idea is that with a manufactured home or a mobile home, um, you can reattach wheels and move it from one place to the other. With a manufactured home, it is, um, it is like anything that you construct from the ground up. Because I have lived for, or I did live for several years in a coastal environment, I do know you can also pick up a stick-built home and move it. It's a, quite a, an ordeal. It's fun to see going down the street, um, but, um, it's not typical. You will see more, you have many more opportunities to see manufactured homes being moved to their sites than you would a stick-built to, to be moved based on a need or an emergency.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to add one more thing. Ms. Henson, you want to add something?
Yeah, I said I'd just like to add one more thing. Um, a stick-built, I mean, a modular will hold its value, just like a single-family home. A modular, I mean, a double-wide or single-wide will not, but a modular will hold its, just that we get the same comps for it as we do a single-family home.
There is one other consideration. Modular and stick-built are regulated by building code alone. Mobile homes, because they are titled through the DMV, have an additional, have additional regulation through, through DMV code. So it is not just building code, but also there are DMV requirements for titled, titled vehicles.
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am, both of you. Commissioners, you have before you a motion to approve RZ 20250761. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry. Jason Cavalier?
Four.
Yakeem Akuratson?
Four.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Four.
Michelle Richards?
Four.
Sheila Henson?
R.
Frances Lu?
Against.
Vote passes five to one. Pass the recommendation up to county council. Anybody need a break? We've been here for a little bit.
Mr., I was just going to ask, could we have a quick recess?
Do I hear a motion for a five-minute recess?
Make a motion.
Show hands. Five-minute recess. Five-minute recess.
Matthew.
(inaudible)
Everybody present?
Yes.
Mics are hot. Sounds like it. All right, next item is RZ 2025-1017, Robertson, Kershaw.
Okay. This item and the one after it are for referral to Kershaw Town Council. They're very similar, but the first one that I'm gonna talk about was an application brought to us by an individual, by a family. They own some property on Church Street. They own two or three lots. Can you click on, on that screen to see if it'll engage it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, if you look at the map here, this family owns the parcel outlined in red. They own another parcel above it and to the right that's in the green, and then a parcel next to it on the right. They need to realign their property lines because they've got structures straddling the property lines. But they can't because in order to do that, you have to have matching zoning. So, they can't realign their property lines or sell the property until they get this taken care of. So, they can't, they went ahead and made their own application apart from the town of Kershaw. But it's essentially the same issue. The area in gray on the map is an area that was never zoned when, when Kershaw did its zoning map years ago. They sent out letters to everyone, to all the property owners, and said, "Please tell us how you want your property to be zoned." And they didn't get complete data or they did not fully fill out their map. So, they are remedying this by having applications come through where they're, we're not rezoning something, we're actually assigning zoning to something that never got assigned zoning. So, the request for this is to assign it zoning that matches the assigned zoning next to it, which is R6, which is the base residential zoning for the town of Kershaw. The applicants are Jerry Robertson and Deborah Rosengrant. And, forward here, we recommend approval to resolve the nonconformity in the Kershaw zoning map. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Do we need to call an applicant for this?
(inaudible)
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson? If you want to speak, you're welcome to come up.
Boy, we saw that show.
We'll take that as a no.
Got a little rope burn on you, no? All right. Applicant didn't speak, so we consider ourselves into public hearing. No one has assigned to speak, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing.
I'm sorry, but that woman's actions reminded me of Judge Judy when she says, "Does it look like you're losing?"
Okay, so, Commissioners, you have before you case, RZ 2025-1017, Robertson, Kershaw. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Ms. Henson and Ms. Akurton? Any discussion? Okay, again, RZ 2025-1017, Robertson, Kershaw, motion to approve. Show of hands. Six to zero. Ms. Lynette Henson is not here. Motion is approved. All right. Last case in public hearing is RZ 2025-1025, zoning corrections for the town of Kershaw.
This one's a doozy, but it's not as bad as the annexations. We have six properties. They are all, they have similar circumstance to Mr. Robertson's property. One of them was annexed at some point in the recent past. We don't quite know when because we don't have those records, but when it was annexed, it was not assigned a zoning district, Kershaw zoning district. The others, the other five, all were, are part of that property that was never zoned when Kershaw did it. So, they're all in, in the town of Kershaw, but they were not ever zoned. So, this is the list. You have the staff report before you with the more details. This is an administrative, an administrative action that requires a public hearing. The county has an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Kershaw to act as its planning department and planning commission. Zoning is the process by which a parcel is regulated for use and lot standards by a county or municipality. As with rezoning, zoning requests are heard by the Lancaster County Planning Commission. For these requests, it'll be followed by the town of Kershaw's Town Council for final approval. And the first one is 2.27 acres at Goldmine Highway near Kirkland Avenue, tax map 015G-0B-002. I don't know why the zeros are underlined. Town of Kershaw is applying on behalf of the owner, Sand Hills Medical. The intent is to assign Kershaw zoning. It was originally, when it was in the county, it was owned PB, professional business, but when it was transferred to the town of Kershaw and annexed, it was not at that time changed to professional office, which is their parallel zoning district. Do you want to do the hearing separately, or do you want me to go through the staff report and then you can do the hearings?
Rock and roll.
Just go, okay. I'll go, I'll go on then. This is, some of you are familiar with Tommy Baker's funeral home, Baker's Funeral Home on Hilton Street. I don't know why Tommy didn't fill out his property information, but it was never zoned at the time they did their zoning map. And so, Kershaw would assign this B1 business to align with the existing business on the These are two parcels next to each other. I consolidated this to make our mapping and notices easier. These are next to each other. They're both commercial properties, one at 606 Southampton and one at 608 Southampton. Town of Kershaw is applying, Town of Kershaw is applying for the Hawfield Group and 521 Filling Station. The intent is to assign Kershaw zoning going from unzoned city designation to Town of Kershaw R6 residential, which matches the residential Kershaw zoning all around it. And we recommend approval of these zoning designations to resolve nonconformities in the Kershaw zoning map.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
No. Get on with it, Frances.
Sure, right. Okay.
It's always the shortest agendas with the longest meetings.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I couldn't hear that.
It's always the shortest agendas with the longest meetings.
Yes.
Let's escalate that. All right. Let's see. The applicant isn't gonna be here because it's the town, so we consider ourselves into public hearing. So, we consider ourselves into public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Robin Smith? Nice and clear, ma'am.
Okay. I own the property at 532 West Richland Street. My physical address is 6 Set Fair Lane, Greenville, South Carolina.
Your name too, please.
9615. I didn't give my name, I'm sorry. Robin Smith.
Perfect.
Okay. I have questions, and my first question is, 532 West Richland Street has been there for over 50 years. So, why is it that it has not been zoned? That's my first question.
We don't really do a Q and A out of this as much as we take your comments from it.
Oh, I'm not allowed to ask questions?
Well, you can ask questions, but I don't have an answer for you. Ms. Williams may be able to answer for you, though.
During the public comment, if you would like to read out your questions, we can get with you as soon as the meeting is adjourned and most likely answer every one of those for you.
But am I allowed to present my question?
You can. And then, but this, this is just a statement period, so you'll just say your piece and then I'll speak to you after the meeting.
And my time is running out.
We'll give you a little extra.
All right. Will, will that change the value of the property by zoning this property? It change the value? And when it's, when it's zoned, would the property tax change? May I have a copy of the zoning rules for the city of Kershaw in Lancaster County? And if zoned, what benefits will I have? And what benefits will the town of Kershaw in Lancaster County have?
Any other questions for them to address for you?
Okay.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I understand. Yeah, they're great questions, they are. And, and I'm confident the planning department will provide you with those answers. They are very good at this. And thank you, ma'am. There's no one else assigned to speak, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have any discussion? Wait, no, that's the wrong part. I said it wrong. My apologies. Commissioners, you have before you RZ 2025-1025, consisting of six parcels, is that correct? For corrections in zoning for the town of Kershaw. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to, to do it.
I approve, I second it.
Ms. Sheila Henson and Ms. Akurton? I told y'all, it was hot over here a minute ago.
Just do it.
Any discussion, Commissioners?
No.
Well, I do. I'm very glad to see Ms. Smith come up here and ask questions about that. That was a very, very involved thing to come up here and do. I applaud you for your, your interest.
Those were really good questions.
Yes, they were. Okay, so, Commissioners, you have before, you have before you a motion to approve, RZ 2025-1025. Show of hands.
Do you approve?
Well, my, my, did she have a, did our, in public comments, did you have any, like, did you want to, yeah, oppose any of the things? Sorry, you didn't have the information, so I just didn't know how this was supposed to go.
Come on back up here. We'll let you talk. You had a minute and a half left on the clock. That's good enough.
Because I have so many questions, I would like for it to be, you know, let's say, halted before you vote or actually have another meeting or whatever, but I, I really do need my questions answered.
So, you would like us to continue it?
I would like for you to continue it.
We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Can we pull that one property from the list?
So, since you just voted, if you want to consider continuing this, you'll need to re-vote? Is it re-vote or retract the vote?
I didn't vote.
We didn't get an actual chance to vote. I didn't get a count.
You didn't get an actual chance to vote?
Yeah, I didn't get a count on that, so it was, I was asking for it, but then I got interrupted, so it was...
I got it, I got it.
So, procedurally, Ms. Henson would withdraw her motion to approve, then you could either postpone the entire action with all six, or you could make an amendment to pull the one in question out, and then you could vote on the other five and then postpone that one to next month. So, whatever, that would be an option, that you had those two options to do that.
I believe Ms. Henson has withdrawn her motion.
Yes.
May I make a motion to vote on all of the, or to withdraw item number?
The last one.
Cannot?
Nope.
Oh, never mind.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Yes. I would recommend that the planning commission makes a motion, if this is what they want to do, to make a motion to approve, and you'll need to read off the ones that you're approving and skip the one that is attached to Ms. Robin Smith's name.
Which is the last one on the list, correct?
I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately. I apologize.
532 West Richland Street?
532. That's hers. So, read off the addresses of the ones you want to approve today. Make the motion, get a second, make the vote, then have another motion to continue Ms. Robin Smith's property discussion to the next meeting. Second and vote.
This is, it's owned by Robert Duran, so is that what?
No.
That's an arrow.
Yeah. So, Ms. Smith owns 532 West Richland?
Yes.
Right, so, you wouldn't, you would list all of the, all of the properties' addresses except for 532 West Richland?
So, I make a motion to approve 210 East Hilton, 606 Southampton, 530 West Richland.
I think that's it.
Nope, should be one, two, three, there should be five.
Right. So you would, you would list all of the, all of the property's addresses except for 532 West Richland?
So I make a motion to approve 210 East Hilton, 606 Southampton, 530 West Richland. I think that's it.
Should be one, two, three, there should be five. Southampton, 608 Southampton, and 531 Richland.
Did I say all of those?
Gold Mine Highway.
Yep.
And please add the property for...
And the property owned by Santos Medical, Sand Hills Medical.
I'll second that.
Any discussion further? Okay.
Let me see if I get this right.
Commissioners, you have before you a motion to approve partial of RZ 2025-1025 for the property located at 2.27 acres at Gold Mine Highway near the intersection of Kirkland Avenue, 1.8 acres at 210 East Hilton Street, Kershaw, 0.86 acres at 606 Southampton Street, Kershaw, 1.88 acres at 608 Southampton Street, Kershaw, and 0.28 acres at 530 West Richland Street in Kershaw.
I make a motion to continue, oh, go ahead. I make a motion to continue the vote on 532 West Richland in Kershaw until next month.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Tinklinberg? Commissioners, you have motion to continue the property of 0.46 acres of 532 West Richland, Kershaw, until next month. Show of hands.
I would, to approve? Well, my, did she have a, did our, in public comments, did you have any, like, did you want to, yeah, oppose any of the things? Sorry, you didn't have the information, so I just didn't know how this was supposed to go.
Come on back up here. We'll let you talk. You had a minute and a half left on the clock. That's good enough.
Because I have so many questions, I would like for it to be, you know, let's say, halt it before you vote or actually have another meeting or whatever, but I really do need my questions answered.
So you would like us to continue it?
I would like for you to continue it.
We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
So since you just voted, if you want to consider continuing this, you'll need to re-vote? Is it re-vote or retract the vote?
I didn't vote.
We didn't get an actual chance to vote.
You didn't get an actual chance to vote?
Yeah, I didn't get a count on that.
Okay.
So I was, I was asking for it, but then I got interrupted.
I got it. I got it.
So procedurally, Ms. Henson would withdraw her motion to approve. Then you could either postpone the entire action with all six, or you could make an amendment to pull the one in question out, and then you could vote on the other five and then postpone that one to next month. So whatever, that would be an option, that you had those are your two options to do that.
I believe Ms. Henson has withdrawn her motion.
Yes. May I make a motion to vote on all of the, or to withdraw item number? Cannot. Nope. Oh, never mind. May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
I would recommend that the planning commission makes a motion, if this is what they want to do, to make a motion to approve, and you'll need to read off the ones that you're approving and skip the one that is attached to Ms. Robin Smith's name.
Which is the last one on the list, correct?
I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately. I apologize.
532 West Richland Street?
532.
That's hers. So read off the addresses of the ones you want to approve today. Make the motion, get a second, make the vote, then have another motion to continue Ms. Robin Smith's property discussion to the next meeting. Second and vote.
This is, it's owned by Robert Duran, so is that what?
No.
That's an arrow?
Yeah. So Ms. Smith owns 532 West Richland? Right. So you wouldn't, you would list all of the, all of the property's addresses except for 532 West Richland?
So I make a motion to approve 210 East Hilton, 606 Southampton, 530 West Richland. I think that's it.
Nope, should be one, two, three, there should be five.
Did I say all of those?
Gold Mine Highway.
Yep.
And please add the property for...
And the property owned by Santos Medical, Sand Hills Medical.
I'll second that.
Any discussion further? Okay. Let me see if I get this right. Commissioners, you have before you a motion to approve partial of RZ 2025-1025 for the property located at 2.27 acres at Gold Mine Highway near the intersection of Kirkland Avenue, 1.8 acres at 210 East Hilton Street, Kershaw, 0.86 acres at 606 Southampton Street, Kershaw, 1.88 acres at 608 Southampton Street, Kershaw, and 0.28 acres at 530 West Richland Street in Kershaw. Show of hands to approve those five addresses. Motion passes six to zero. Ms. Lynette Henson is not here. Do I hear a second motion related to the property of 4.6, 0.46 acres at 532 West Richland in Kershaw?
I make a motion to continue, oh, go ahead. I make a motion to continue the vote on 532 West Richland in Kershaw until next month.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Tinklinberg? Commissioners, you have motion to continue the property of 0.46 acres of 532 West Richland Street, Kershaw, until next month. Show of hands. Motion passes six to nothing. And that will be postponed until the next meeting in June. Do we have a date for that?
Yes. And since it's Old Men's, it should be the first day of the year. June the 7th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harden. That concludes all of our public hearings tonight. Let's move on to other, and I believe our first order of business with that will be Old Men's addendum from Judy Anna's concern that there was an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in reviewing, I noticed that from the workshop that we had April 3rd, that a full presentation for the comprehensive plan update was included, so it appears that we actually received that presentation, but really we were going to postpone that to another date. So I just would like that presentation omitted.
Do we have the April 3rd minutes nearby that we could reference?
So Ms. Tinklinberg, to clarify, it was attached to the minutes and you want it removed?
It was included with the documentation, like it was a part of the minutes, so it appeared on the record.
So you just want that attachment removed as you did address it?
Right.
Okay.
So do we need to table that to the next meeting so we can see it, or? Chair motion to remove the document that was not supposed to be included with the April 3rd workshop minutes?
I wasn't sure how you guys wanted to handle it, so I was...
Not presented. Okay, the chair motion to remove...
The minutes.
The document that was not presented from the minutes for April 3rd, 2025. Do I have a second?
Oh, you made it. Okay. Second.
Show of hands.
Thank you, Jason.
Nothing, motion passes. Please remove that document from the April 3rd minutes. Any other things from the planning department?
No, sir, not at this time. I will see you guys on the next workshop day, which is June 5th, which will be our first mobile workshop.
Do we have a plan around that one yet? I know the April one got, or May one got.
I didn't adjust the original plans that we had. I was going to keep the plan to go to the lower part of the county, as we had discussed in workshop, and then we could pick the date for the Indian Land Visit during that time. I have the transportation set up to be here that evening, so everyone will meet here like a normal workshop day.
What's the date of that? June 5th.
The 5th, correct? I'll get an email out discussing business related to that. I will copy everyone on it, so if you would please add that to our next minutes at our workshop, so the public knows that we were discussing this, and I'll do that as soon as possible.
And do you still want input from us in that part of the county with things we would suggest?
Absolutely.
And which commissioners will be that? Which districts?
Me. Ms. Henson. Sheila Henson.
We're going to go, we're going to...
Yeah, we're doing the southern part, yeah, on June 5th.
We're going to be in Kershaw. Hot dog. We're coming to see you.
I'll do good.
All righty. In that case, if nobody else has anything to add?
I just have a question. Do we have a July workshop? We might have covered this before. Right, that's what I wanted to check, so there's just no work.
We did confirm that when the planning commission, back in August, September, made the calendar for the year, they did decide to cancel the July workshop, so there will be no July workshop.
So that people are on vacation, I think that's what we said.
It was, it's the day before the 4th. It's the 3rd, so people said, no, thank you.
When do we come back to recertifying chairs and seats? When does that roll? Okay, so it'll be that July meeting at the end of it, whatever, whatever that date is. I don't have it on here. Oh, it is the 15th?
Yeah.
Okay. You're telling me what it is and I'm not listening. Okay.
And I will not be at that meeting. I'll be out of the country.
Well, lucky you.
In July.
You just have to stop you...
What's that? I'll cancel my cruise. I'll be there.
Cool. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, third, fourth, and fifth.
Show of hands. One, two, three. Ms. Lu, would you like to adjourn? There is that next six.
I'm looking for my stuff.
Like I said, they gave me an application to reapply. Like, what did I do with it? I found it. No, I found it, I found it. I was like, I know I didn't lose it, but it got mixed up in all these papers. Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm an engineer and I'm...